States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Bobbey.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Clark, Axon, Tyler, Axon, there.
Here.
Cruzie.
Here. And just for the record, our, and Tyler were excused. I accept the motion to approve the agenda of July thirteenth as presented, July eleventh, two thousand thirteen.
So moved.
Motion by Baderby, support by Bobbey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Accept the motion for approval of the minutes of June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, regular board meeting.
I make my question, accept the minutes of, two thousand thirteen, June two thousand, June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen.
You got it.
I'll support that.
Motion by Chapman, support by Baderby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment?
I would like to read a statement and also ask a few questions regarding the council's decision to purchase the tax for closed property at eight oh nine six West State Street. I think in advance for your time and willingness to address my concerns. The Michigan DEQ Fire Suppression Training Environmental Protection Guidance Document, a copy of which I have here and can be included in the public record, if you will, outlines a number of measures that should always be taken prior to conducting a training burn. The first of these measures is to choose an acceptable location. The DEQ guide states that training should not be conducted within two miles of a school, nursing home, hospital, or other public facility. The guide also states that you should contact residents that may be affected by the smoke, excuse me, the smoke and odor prior to burning. In previous meetings, it was stated that the fire department already committed to demolishing the house by a training burn. My question is, have you discussed the recommended safety measures with the Central Lake Fire Department? Do you have a date scheduled for the burn? And what, if any, plans do you have to notify residents and facilities that are in close proximity to the house? The DEQ also says that the building must be thoroughly inspected for asbestos and that any asbestos must be removed prior to burning. There is a mandatory notice of intent titled EQP five six six one form that must be filed at least ten days, ten working days prior to fire suppression training on any structure. So my question is, have you filed the form? And if not, when do you intend to file the form? And the DEQ guide further states that all furniture, appliances, solid waste, garbage, et cetera, must be removed from their premises prior to burning because the contaminants of these items are extremely toxic and pose a health and safety risk to both firefighters and nearby residents. The NFPA standard fourteen oh three provides detailed guidance on preparing a structure for a training exercise. So my question then is, have you taken these requirements into consideration? And have they been accounted for and the estimates from contractors were calculated into the zero cost of the village of buying this house and then burning it down? Can you tell us if you adhere to the NFPA fourteen oh three standard when conducting this and other training burns? I would like to add that I find it troubling that the village council president has taken to sending unsolicited private messages via Facebook to speak for and defend the actions of the village council. I think it's unbecoming and possibly illegal for an elected official to tell public citizens in unsolicited private messages that they should hire attorneys if they have a problem with council actions, or that they might be called to answer before the council for their beliefs. Because, one, it could be construed as harassment, intimidation, or a valid threat; and, two, public citizens are not answerable to the council. It is the council that is answerable to the public. Lastly, I would like to notify the council that I filed complaints with the Michigan Attorney General and the Antrim County Prosecuting Attorney. I think the discussions and decision to purchase the house at eight oh nine six West State Street at the request of the First Congregational Church of Central Lake in order to burn the house down for blight and then sell the improved lot to the church were made a substantial violation of the Open Meetings Act and Michigan Conflict of Interest Law. Thank you for your time.
Well, first, we haven't had the fire chief here yet. We've probably addressed those concerns, right?
Okay, I, I don't have any information for it this time.
Okay. Okay. As far as for people think we've done illegal actions, I'll say it again, go get an attorney because we have letters from our attorney and everything we've done has been legal, ethical, above the board, and in the public eye. The fact that people think we promised to sell the property to the church has been addressed so many times, I'm honestly tired of addressing it, okay? It has not been promised to the church, it's been done, I've made public statements of that, the council's addressed it. I, I don't, I don't know what else to say, other than, I, I don't, is there anything else to say? I mean, I personally have nothing more to say on this issue.
Well, apparently we have citizens who are not comfortable with the decision that's been made and are looking for some answers. I don't have those answers, I, myself. But I'm concerned that we still have so much concern. And it's probably not right to simply say we're sick of discussing it because the citizens are not, are not satisfied.
I don't know one question that's been asked that hasn't been answered by this council.
When is the scheduled burn going to take place? That was asked.
We just, we just purchased the house two days ago. We got the deed.
Well, they asked the question, but it hasn't been answered, so.
This is public comment, not, not question and answer period, just so we're clear about it. Do you want to know a date yet? I mean, they haven't even had a fire meeting to determine a date. I mean, I, I don't know how to answer, other than the no date has not been picked because the fire department was just notified. What did I talk to you, yesterday? Yesterday.
Okay, there's a, there was an answer. I think, okay.
So, I, I honestly, maybe no, I don't know, no other questions that haven't been answered? Yes?
Well, one of the questions that I just asked was, was the debris and garbage removal and furniture removal and appliances and those things, which pose a toxic threat to people, was removal of that taken into consideration when you figured, when you calculated estimates or when you contacted the contractors who estimated, you know, the preparation of the house? Those things are, I, those costs have to be covered by somebody. Is it the village? Is it the fire department? Is it the contractors that are soliciting bids? Who covers that portion of the events?
Bill doesn't address that when he addresses the other questions as to what needs to be done to burn the house. I mean.
I don't even know what, what there is to declare that.
Okay. Well, the question was in regards to the, the finance of that because it's been stated that it's a zero cost to the village and I don't understand how that could come to zero.
Because the lot will be sold for all incurred costs.
Okay.
So, you know, that adds another thousand dollars to the cost and the cost to the property is a thousand dollars more. You know, I mean, I, I'm sure the fire department's going to address it as, as, as proper, so. So, anything else? I'm not trying to ignore it, I really, I'm just, I think we've answered.
Well, this is public comment time, it's not question and answer type.
No.
I'm trying to be respectful of the time that's been allotted.
If you have a question, please.
I have a lot of questions. One of them is why you're sending private messages to people via Facebook. And I don't, I don't think it's appropriate. Another question is, what about the DEQ and the asbestos and those types of things? Are those things you'll be, you'll be complying with?
The fire department will address them.
Something to do with a regular concrete basis?
Yeah, they will address them.
Also, the discussion and deliberation that took place, the negotiations with the church, how those things all took place, I don't understand. In May, there was a brief mention by you of the, the idea of purchasing the house and then you went and got a letter of committal. I'm wondering when those deliberations all took place, there are a lot of questions remaining in my mind and I think in the minds of a lot of citizens.
I don't know whether there were ever any negotiations with the church.
Well, there must have been negotiations in order to acquire a letter of commitment.
The letter of commitment, so the church is willing to pay twelve thousand dollars for the property offered to them. That's not a negotiation, that's a matter of.
Obviously, there's a cost.
Why would the village go in with a project like that unless we know our, had our cost covered? Would people be more comfortable if we went out and spent twelve thousand dollars with no viable thing to do with the property?
No, I think.
That would be a cost to the taxpayers then.
That's not the question. The question is the method. The question is about the methods and about whether or not they were in compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
I don't know how else we could have had a discussion with the church without going to the church and having a discussion with them.
I think you're, I, I.
I bet really, though.
Really not your thing, it's all it's pointless at this point.
There was any wrongdoing on there? I mean, I don't know how you have a discussion with the church without having a discussion with them.
The church has been looking at this property before this. The church, the church has come in a couple of years, you want to know some of this and this is what has happened. The church has come in two years ago, before the property was even on the market, looking to try and find the owner. So they have been in contact with the village and with the county. I'm sorry you don't like my answer, but this has been, like, ongoing for two, two years.
That answer is fine, but that's not the answer to the question I've asked. The question is, it appears to me as if the village council president was representing both sides in the negotiation for a potential purchase of property for the, for acquiring the letter of commitment. Those are, that's my question, is about whether or not the law about conducting this business in open has been followed. It's not about what the church's interest is. I think we're all clear on what the church's interest is in the property. My question is whether or not it's appropriate for the village council president to be doing what appears to be the church's business as a public official.
My answer would be yes, it was entirely appropriate to go to the church and see if they were willing to purchase, willing to purchase the property offered to them for that amount. Or we would have went other places. I mean, we had, the council had no intention of buying that property unless we knew again we could cover the cost. The, the property has not been promised to the church, they're well aware of that. The church has promised that once it's done, if we offer it to them, or anybody, the church is willing to pay twelve thousand dollars for all incurred costs, which could exceed a little bit. They, they were great, they're willing to do that. They've never been told they could purchase the house. It hasn't been offered to anybody, it hasn't been promised to anybody.
I think the sticky situation is, it appears as though it has been to the public. And I think there are public residents who are perhaps outraged, upset that, that it wasn't up for fair game. In, in other words, if you do it for somebody, one person, you do it for the, you need to be willing to do it for somebody else.
Well, I've, I've answered that so many times. If anybody else wants to come forward at the time, you know, for thirteen thousand dollar, the prices, they're more than willing to.
But at that point, the house will have been burned down.
Yes.
So that's a moot point, and it actually kind of distracts from the issue at hand, which was the decision to acquire the property in the first place. If it were allowed to have gone to public auction, as it would have if you had not exercised your first right of refusal, then there would be no necessity to burn the house. The house only has to be burned because you bought it.
Correct.
And, so, to say after the fact that, well, gosh, you could come in and pay fourteen thousand dollars for the lot, doesn't, it doesn't solve the complaint, which is that the, the property should have gone to public auction in the first place and the church or anyone else who was interested in the property should have bid openly at the tax foreclosure auction. The church should not have been given special consideration. And in fact, their letter of commitment states that they are requesting that you purchase the property. To me, that pretty directly, you can infer from that, that you're purchasing the property on behalf of the church, or they're asking you to do it.
Well, we're not. Once again, you asked the question, I answered, you don't like the answer, but we, we did not. Did we do anything wrong? No. Did the council decide to buy a piece of blighted property to remove the blight? Yes, that was a council decision. I mean, I, I, I know you.
When did the decision of this decision take place?
Last month. At last month's meeting, when we voted to purchase the property.
I never heard anybody speak about it, other than you.
We talked about it with my gosh, hour.
You did not. No, you did.
Well.
The rest of the council had no deliberations about this issue, either in May or in June. You were the only person that had spoken.
Did the council vote to purchase a piece of property at the last meeting and remove the house under blight?
There was another, I would, at the, at the last meeting there was, but the May meeting there was about two minutes.
Well, we made the decision at the last meeting.
Okay, that, I think.
That's when the decision was made, in front of the whole council, open. It was a council decision to do it, to remove blight, it's done in probably every municipality in the state of Michigan. A lot of municipalities spend money to remove blight.
Do they do it for their own churches?
It's not been done for the church. It really bothers me you keep saying that. Like I said, you've answered the question.
Well, because you've done negotiations for the church and the council.
You answer them, you don't like the answer? You ask again. I can, I can answer it a hundred times.
If we'd had a letter of committal from, say, Mr. Bachman, who owns Bachman, who used to own Bachman's, would that have been different?
Yes, or no, actually, it would be the same. If Mr. Bachman had asked the council to purchase a tax foreclosure property, call it blight, burn it down so that I can buy the property next door, if, if the council, if, if anybody had asked that, it would be equally inappropriate.
Nobody asked.
It's doing, it's, it's, it's a conflict of interest, it's doing, it's.
It's not a conflict of interest, that's been through the attorney too.
Well, I haven't seen anything from the attorney.
Well, the council has, so.
Oh, has there been discussion with the attorney on this issue? Subsequent to the meeting?
There's been discussion, the attorney asked and answered in writing. And everything's been done, it's been legal, it's been.
So we can get freedom of information requests for that.
It's been kept in a court, the courts have said it's okay. It's blight, we're allowed to buy, it's blighted. The church never approached us and asked us to buy property for them.
When I came in for a freedom of information request last week, I was still told very clearly that there was no other documentation whatsoever, no other paperwork involving the house at all.
We just got it.
You just got a, you just got a, the council, okay.
Yep, yep. Excuse me. I mean, I, I mean, I know there's some disagreement on it, but honestly, I haven't heard too much in the community, other than they're glad we're removing some blight at zero cost to the taxpayers.
May I ask, did the, was the village council aware that you were soliciting bids from Buffman and Heinz for the contracting, the tree removal and the excavating before?
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not. Once again, I don't know how you get a bid without going and asking. So I, I don't know if you guys expect everybody to come to the meeting so we can ask them for a bid in the meeting, but honestly, that's not the way government works.
Well, no, I just wondered if the village council was aware of it before.
We go off, we get a bid, we look at them as a council, we decide to accept them or not. I mean, somebody has to call the labor.
The village code says you're supposed to get three bids on each.
We haven't, we haven't even approved a bid yet.
Over twenty-five hundred dollars.
Does any, do we approve any bid for demolition of the house or to clean it up? We have. We just got an average cost of, what, one percent of that?
Okay. So you'll be soliciting three bids for each part of the contract?
If the council still decides.
That's what the code says.
I know, I'm very well aware of what it says.
Oh, okay. I'm not so sure that it's up to the council to decide to say the code or not.
It's a council's decision as to how we conduct business.
Okay.
I mean, that's just, it is, I mean.
Within the code or violation of it then?
Violation of the code.
Yes, the code says you're supposed to get three bids for any, any contract over twenty-five hundred dollars.
In a, in a council policy, which is how we conduct business in the council, I'm not going to debate it, I mean, I think it's silly. If we come back with three bids from Traverse City, somebody will come to the meeting and say, my gosh, why didn't you do it openly? It's silliness.
I, I, I object to that because that is not true at all. The code says that you will get three bids for any contract over twenty-five hundred dollars, and actually, that you are allowed to give preference to local contractors. I think that you're making diversionary comments and they don't apply to this.
And I'm trying to be honest with you. I mean, we discussed what's in our policy with the attorney. I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't know where you're going with all this, I really don't. I have no idea. All I can tell you is that the council has deed to the house, we've agreed to burn the house, remove the blight, and sell the lot for all costs incurred, and unless the council changes their mind, we're proceeding forward tonight.
Can I ask, what's the schedule of events? Now, when, do you know, when does the fire department meet?
We haven't got that determined yet.
Okay, thank you.
But you will be filing the required paper with the DEQ.
We always do, guys.
Oh, okay, that was my question, that was one that I wasn't sure, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Scott, please ring.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody gets a chance to look at the police report from, from June. It is getting busy, just outright, trying to keep our head above water, busy. And that's kind of an in and a nutshell of explanation, I guess. You've got a breakdown of pretty much everything complaint-wise that we've handled. A lot of time was spent on some follow-up stuff that is going on right now. We had a firearms qualification. A lot of stuff that happened in June was related to the end of school stuff as far as sports getting finished off the school year, finishing off and stuff like that, so nothing too major, but just kind of time-consuming. A little bit of training, and since we talked last month, and Bob was here, Bob's all on board now, too. The process to go through is you have to be certifiable as a police officer. If you're not certified as a police officer, you're hired by your department. Bob was sworn in, and everything has to go through the state, which is called NCOS. They look at his credentials, all the paperwork, and it's just paper trail is what it is. So that's all done. He actually gets an NCOS number. Once he gets that NCOS number, I know he's good to go, so I already have his number, so he's pretty much ready to go. I'm still looking to get some more guns, one for him at zero cost to the village, we get him for free from the state, you just got to wait till a gun comes available. We are looking specifically for making a model of a gun. Whenever one gets turned in, it gets to destroy, that's how we get our guns. So, to date, we have one, two, three, four, five handguns, two shotguns, two assault rifles, all at zero cost to the village, you just have to be patient and wait for them. It's not like we can go buy them. If we were going to buy it, it's probably a seven hundred, eight hundred dollar gun. So we can patiently wait for the free one to come. That's all I'm waiting for, is just a couple of little things for him, and then he'll be on board one day a month, just like Lydia's, keeps the certification, keeps them kind of fresh. Bob's primary responsibility is going to be our firearms, and he'll do every time we do a firearms training, he'll be, that will be his shift for the month. If he doesn't have a month where he doesn't do firearms, he's going to be basically working the rolling and things and stuff like that. He'll take care of all of our firearms as far as the safety, the inspection of them, making sure that they have the proper ammo in them. Sometimes we have to rotate the ammunition so it's not old stuff, and there's a lot of things he'll be doing which will actually be very nice, you know, his expertise, he was a chief range instructor for the federal government, which is, you know, I couldn't even find anybody in the area that would actually fill up shoes.
You're exciting about that.
Oh, yeah.
You're glowing.
He's, I mean, that type of a caliber, and even when Al was here, Al, you know, fifty years of experience, I mean, you don't get that in a small town for what we pay, which is, you know, honestly saying, it's, you know, these guys are pretty well qualified, so. So he'll be on board shortly, probably in a month or two, you'll see him, something like that. Any questions?
May, may I ask, I noticed ordinance violations are kind of increasing, what kind are we beginning?
Oh, specifically, I can't remember. I mean, I could probably pull them up and ask you. I mean, they could be anything from noise complaints to garbage complaints to grass complaints to anything that are nuisance-type complaints.
Not one big thing coming.
They get tagged, when I get a sheet, and for lack of better words, it looks like that. That's what comes from the county when we actually check out a complaint, they'll just say ordinance violation. A month later, when I actually pull the stats to throw it on there, I just pull up as an ordinance. So it could be anything from grass to noise to.
Okay, thank you.
Scott.
Yep.
Sam, BPW.
You should all have a copy of my BPW operations. Rob Tyler's not at this meeting, so I will talk a little bit about the amount of sidewalk that we physically removed because Rod, or Rob is the chairman of the streets and sidewalks. And you'll see that, I don't know, it comes from thirteen hundred feet, something like that, this month, that has been pulled out and replaced. Black dirt's been put back in, seed mulched, grass is actually growing. One sewer pump, it says attended safety meeting, actually, the safety meetings are at the shop the first Monday of the month, at eight thirty a.m. every morning. And we had one water main break on South M eighty-eight. And overtime on this report is Steven Johnson's overtime for that month. That does not include me because I do not get overtime in, in the summer. Any questions?
I'd like to say thanks, Sam, for all the hard work getting aside this time. I know this, this report doesn't reflect all of them that we did with the last month.
And I do go back to the doctor, I don't know if you guys heard where, but I was off early, my back went out. My, I go back to the doctor at seventeen, find out what they're going to do. That might be surgery. I'll know then. If it is, I'll be off work for a while. Any questions? Thank you.
Claude, campground?
Well, things are finally picked up down there. It was, it's pretty busy, we had a good Fourth of July, had all thirty-eight sites, so, and it's going to be another busy weekend, week this week. So, we lost nine or ten today, and we've already gained that back, and we've got more coming in tomorrow, and probably going to be public in tomorrow. I did meet with the park committee this past month, and we did the order, four recommendations that they voted on to present to the board, and Lyle and Ralph aren't here today, so that concerns the working of the, the reservations and so forth down there. And the month of May, we had only eight lake sites, nine are now, some sun wiped around about thirty-four. So, the red flag is, is preventing some of that stuff. Of course, if they don't show up now for the sake that people are here, they're going to take it for a whole week and sometimes two weeks, so it hurts us. I think the verbiage hurts us when it says no lake sites are available, so. But, that's it.
Any questions for Claude?
Thank you, Claude. For respond. I, I have some, I'll save it till after my report, you know, through all at the same time. I'm just, I'm here on streets and sidewalks, so once again, I'll address the lights issue down in my report.
Sewer and water, Todd?
Actually, pretty quiet. One, I'd like to thank, like we always, thank Sam and his team for the main break on, on South M eighty-eight. I mean, they had that coal patch taken care of, you know, for three or four days, and made the fourth go off, you know, without any issues and success. We had one new sewer hookup and one new water hookup around Green Street for Chris Corbett. All the water samples were sent into the DEQ for approval, and they just put a bypass at Greenfield Four up in the subdivision. And that's about it, there hasn't been, I haven't had any issues from anybody, any mail or calls or anything, so.
Any questions for Rod? Thanks, Rod. Bill, Claude?
I'm in Chief Scott, and his attendance at the meetings on the vehicles, he's, he's right on top of it, caught a, a water leak before it cost an engine, and got the, you know, it's, would have been easier to ignore or pull off, but we did get that fixed and he did. And, uh, helping with the traffic control on the Fourth of July there after the fireworks was a, a great help. He's done that every year, I think, since he's been here. And again, there was no accidents, but all the people accidenting, and that was pretty smooth, so appreciate that. I think he pretty well covered everything else I had, so that's all, all right.
Any questions for Bill? Bill, Denise, communication?
Um, I just responded to several emails, and one recurring theme is people are wanting village cleanup. I know what's going to happen this year, but I think we need to keep it talked about, see if there's anything we can do to make that happen, whether we team up with the township or something for next year, just, just so we keep, keep it active, talking about it. There's always an email there from somebody regarding, can we have a cleanup, when is it? So, that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Denise?
Denise, did you get a chance to get with Cory? I know you called me the other night.
I, uh, got with Ken, and.
Is there, are you going to have a chance to get with him, maybe, in, in scheduled time where you can sit down and learn that website a little bit so you can upload some stuff too, or some?
Yeah, our staff seems to be a little, a little off.
Cory, Cory's hard to catch sometimes, especially when you work during the day Cory's hard to catch sometimes, especially when you work during the day. He's not necessarily always available, but. I know he'll work with you to schedule in advance.
Sure.
I know we mentioned we'd like to get Rachel tuned up a little bit on the website and, and all that, where she'll be able to do some of that also for us. To save us some costs and, uh, some time.
Thank you, Denise. Joe?
Thank you. Not a lot. For me, it's been a busy family time of month, but did look at a couple of things. And our budget's looking pretty good. Pat's working on, looking at some of the numbers that we weren't sure on, so we're just going to pull up the reports on them. Had a couple of things just kind of in the area that I think we need to maybe hand off to some of the committees to figure out what's going on for sure. On July third, I was down to the park, Thurston Park, and had a boat officer tell me that we cannot park any boats from the, what I'm going to call beach area in Thurston Park, all the way around to the four docks of the campground. He informed me that is all swim area, designated swim area. To which my response was I didn't believe Central Lake has any designated swimming area because we don't have a life, on duty lifeguard. So the only reason I bring this to the council and to see if we have the Parks and Recreation Committee look into this is we just last year had Sam and the guys clean that up for the specific purpose of putting boats in that area and docking them. And so to be told that we can't now, uh, waters, water places at this time. I didn't even share with his name, so.
That doesn't matter.
I think it's something that we should look at to make sure, find out. The Parks and Recreation Committee probably should look into. Do we have a designated swim area? Can we do one? Is liability an issue? I don't know all that stuff. I just thought it's something we should know, especially moving forward with the grant and the boardwalk area and docks that we're looking at putting in there.
Could you say from where and where you said again?
On the, would be the north side of, or sorry, the west side of the beach area that comes down into the park or the end of the water. From the north side of that, around in that inlet, inlet there, the cove up to our campground office, which has four docks, or three docks, I believe. Four, four docks. One sunken, three, yeah, three usables. So I, again, I just think when I asked if we could, more boats up in there, his response was no, it's a designated swim area. So I just think it's something we need to.
So like in the playground area?
All the way around the campground, yeah, is what I was told. Now, and all, it just may have been one of them things because I did have my boat probably in an area that they didn't like. I was right on the edge of the swim area or what he was, would really consider a swim area, so. I mean, I understand him telling me move my boat, so. But I just think that that other area is something we need to look at and clarify, do we have a designated swim area or not? And can we more boats there? And do we decide that? Because when I asked the question, who decides the designated swim area? Was it us, the DEQ, the? I didn't get a real solid answer on that, so I don't, and I don't know it. So with that one, then the other thing, Sam is working on the Thurston Park slide still. We talked to him today a little bit about it and Ken. Sam was out one week with a back injury and we're still looking at, at the different options on the trucks and our options available to us there for the DPW. And the different bids and see what's available. So that, that's all I had, guys.
Any questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe. Lee was not here, so President's Report, let's try to move through quickly. First, we got a letter from Northern Lake Economic Alliance about a place making grant. We have until August second, because I think I moved to the second, basically five thousand dollars for place making. Benches in the park, benches downtown, so hopefully we'll be able to fill it out. It, it's pretty simple. I, I can have you see it if you want. You have to, it's, there's not truly an application. It has to be no more than two pages. It has to contain a purpose statement, background of need, project goals and activities, participant information, project area, project commitment, innovation and community impact. It also requires a match, so. Joe will look at it finance wise and it's.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk.
I don't know what else to say.
Do they have a, do they have a maximum?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
The match they don't say, and as usual, of course, the more you're willing to match, probably the greater your chances of getting the money. It's probably something we should do, so. We will address it. Somebody will call Northern Lake Economic Alliance. I'll, I'll talk to Sarah and see what they say because it, it came from them, so. Their, their examples were park benches, picnic tables, public gardens, weight bindings, signage, rec equipment, public garden murals and gazebos, so we will.
Would that be anything that would be available, like where the old tiny tat tire town used to be, by the softball field?
Playground, right? That's a playground.
Yeah, we talked about that a while back, trying to do something up there.
The problem is, you'll see when we get to the slide issue, five thousand dollars.
I know.
Doesn't, it, it barely buys you one piece of equipment, you know, so we can talk, or we can throw some ideas around. Maybe, maybe benches in the park, maybe get some benches downtown, but it's, it's, it's probably worth, I, you know, I mean, I'm sure a lot, we're going to get a lot of applications, but things like this, we should continue to try, so. If anybody would like to volunteer, we'll, we'll talk about it. I received a letter from Northern Lake Economic Alliance. I'll read the first part. The second part was about the grant, which we just went over. First part was, this was from Sarah Christensen. First, I want to apologize for not giving a thank you note to you back in early May. I just discovered today after cleaning up from having to let our office person go that we received a check from the village for their annual investment on May sixth and she failed to notify me or Andy. So thank you very much. We are excited to have the village on board and look forward to continuing to serve economic development needs. That was what we're reading. Truly paying to be a member of Northern Lake, so they appreciated it. Send it on. The other one, we got a letter from Protech, which is the Michigan Coalition to Protect Public Rights Away. Honestly, I, I never heard of them before, that they've benefited for seventeen years. They work with the NFL and, excuse me, the MML to protect public rights away from telecommunications companies and other things. So I called the MML today. I finally got an answer back from them. Called back this afternoon, talked to them a little bit. They, they've worked with them for a lot of years. I mean, they, they like them. They say what they do is good and no way should we feel obligated to commit any money to them. Their suggested dues for the community sector would be one hundred and nineteen dollars. So what, what I would like is approval after we talk some more to them and I talk to them more, that if, if we decide this is a good thing. I mean, to me, it looks, like I said, I went on their website and looked and basically they're, they're a group that constantly watches legislation to protect the public rights away from telecommunications companies and other things, so. They defend big channels. I mean, there, there's a whole list on there. Everybody wants to see it, so. If the council doesn't have any objection, I would suggest them on something really throws up a red flag. I'll call the MML again tomorrow. And we're willing to pay one hundred and nineteen dollars to support this.
Per year.
It's per year, yeah.
What, I guess I'm not, what exactly do they protect us from?
Public rights. So telecommunications, I mean, years ago, thought they had like a rubber stamp permitting what they wanted in the communities and I guess it's a constant battle.
So is this for, is this for like the telephone poles and utility basic right of way stuff?
Yes, okay. Pipeline safety, cell tower industry. Electric transmission companies. They, they claim they want to build massive transmission towers, you know, so it, it, it's probably good that they're being proactive on it, keeping an eye on it. Like I said, they defend the public educational government cable channels. Okay, we will. We'll do some more discussion on that one now. I have a letter to the council on the park. It's from Peggy Vandenberg. Just wanted to say one thing about the online reservations at Thurston Park this year. My family all got in at the times we wanted, but I think that you missed out on a great opportunity to show a little community spirit to those of us that have camped here, that for, that have camped there for many years. In my case, this was year fifty-one. It would have been nice to receive a letter or even a postcard telling us. I filled out an address card at the campground for years. That you were going, that you were going to an online, online had given us the date it was going live. I know some people who didn't get to come this year because of it. Lyle had his hands full trying to explain and help people. Our family will again be back next year, so if there are changes, I'd like to know about it. Your town is like a second home to me and I will roll with the flow no matter what. But what started as a campsite and now turned into twelve sites at least, thank you for hearing me out. So I will, I'll personally write her apology. She's right. We should have contacted people. Honestly, I didn't know. We had to wait to get ahold of campers, so of course, there's always little mistakes made. She was polite about it. It was a legitimate request, so we, we missed that one, so. If, if it's okay with the council, I'll just write her a letter and ask her for showing your concern and let her know we apologized. We received a letter from the DEQ. I won't read the letter verbatim. About a month ago, probably, Pat? We, we had a fellow from the DEQ stopped in because there had been a complaint about the burn pile compost pile facility, so they had to come and check. He told me we'd be getting a letter and we did. They found, correct me if I'm wrong, said they found nothing wrong with our compost pile, anything in there except for the fact that we have a collective burn pile. And he said we would be getting a number and a name to call for air quality control, air quality division. Sam called her today and talked to her. Uh, area is now chained and locked because we're not allowed to have a burn pile. And have been the village limits or been fourteen hundred feet of the village limits, so we're going to have a conference call with them Monday or Tuesday. Kick it around, see what happens. Maybe they'll let us burn it one more time to get out of there. I don't know, but I mean, I mean, we're not going to change air quality division's rules, so. If anybody asks why it's chained and locked, that's because the burn pile's shut down, so hopefully.
And that's out of our E M.
That's how it is completely. Like I said, we'll have a conference call with them and we can, all get as upset as we want about their decision, but that's what's been done, so.
Is it how close to the village it came?
Fourteen, fourteen hundred feet. So that's why that's chained and locked. We'll let you know as that moves on. What was decided. I have the agreement to, from Bill Chapman, to sign for the fire department to burn down the house. So with the council's permission, I'll sign it and have it notarized. And yes, Patty, they will address all the DEQ issues, right, Bill? It will be addressed, no doubt about it. The council's decision, I'll sign this and give it back to the fire department. It's given an approval to do the burn. Okay. Like I said, we, we do. I just want to make sure the council.
We already approved.
Yeah, we should have.
It was that, we received the deed on the house.
So that is our Scotland today, posted with no trespassing sign. I talked to Larry Blaimer with the lines and on that note, if there's anything the lines would like to try to get out of that house for their auction to let us know. Go do it. If the lines don't want to, we have the lines because they're local. If not, we will call. I, we will call Habitat for Humanity, see if they'd like to go in and see if there's anything they want, so we'll do the best we can at that, so. Larry, we're going to talk to the lines. I believe they got a meeting tonight, but either way, call the lines and then Habitat. And proceed forward with that. I gave Pat this check earlier. It's a check, as we discussed earlier, from the Bel Air Rotary for three thousand dollars. It's their part toward the purchase of the slides, so. Bob Morgan was going to come here and present it. He got too busy last month and this month, so he didn't want to hold it up any longer. So, but I'd personally like to say thank you to the Bel Air Rotary.
Thank you, man.
I think we will write them a letter. Thank you. And then with that being said, we might, let's move on to the slide. I'll pass this up and down. Right, that is the slide that we've talked about. Sam talked to a few more about. It's a straight eight foot composite slide. And we'd like to just order this moving down and then at that height, it, it says the size in there. Probably the area underneath the slide has to be probably footed. It's quite big. It's like thirty-three feet by sixteen or something, I think it says, so.
Really?
Yeah, big area. And that's by, I don't know whose safety rule they ask.
Uh, whoever does them for, there's an answer number for it.
Yeah, absolutely. And they suggest the area.
How tall is the current one?
Seven, just a little over seven foot.
And that's got the safety around it, Bob, and it's composite.
This is composite. All the steel is covered with rubber, so you don't have a rust. Composite.
Match the other colors.
And it will be colored, colors to match all the other playgrounds, because that's school colors.
So that's okay with everybody? If anybody else would like to see the slide, it's, this slide is just a composite eight foot straight slide, so. With guard around the dock. No gizmos.
No gizmos.
Anything they say, if it's called a gizmo, we pay for it, so. Zero gizmos, so. Thank you. Next, Sam, give that order. I have a ballot from, I will read this. It's from the MML, Workers' Compensation Fund. Enclosed is your ballot for this year's board trustee election. Seven incumbent trustees have agreed to seek reelection. You also may write in one or more candidates if you wish. A brief biographical sketch of each candidate is provided for your review. I hope you will affirm the work of the nominated committee by returning a completed ballot in the enclosed return envelope no later than August eleventh. You may also submit your ballot online by going. And that's just. Thank you for your membership in the Workers' Compensation Fund and participating in the election of your governing board, Michael Forster Fund Administrator, so. I'll pass it down. And see what people are. While you're looking at that. Consumers, that is, you got ahold of us? And Sam talked to her today. They are in town.
Yesterday, last night.
Yesterday, doing the audit of our registered streetlights. So we will know what's what. They'll know what's what, so they're moving forward as they promised, so that, that was a, that was a good thing for them to get done. Did everybody get a copy of the? The new ones, the new ones. If you have any old ones, shredding. Yes, there's. So if there's any questions on that, which we should, we talked about a lot, I know, but, but basically what it is, is there's a, there's a total of forty fixtures. Thirty-four of the street skis lights, six are lights in the camp. They're going to be replaced with twenty-seven watt alts downtown, twenty-seven watt LED. And then as, as we go through the whole thing, they show the project cost, twenty-four thousand fifty-seven, the interest of twenty-seven fourteen. Total project cost of twenty-eight thousand five sixty-five. And then the rebate amount, seventeen ninety-five, is not, is not figured into any of those amounts because they truly will give us that rebate check and we can use it. Pay under the lights, we can put it in the general fund, but the rebate check truly comes right to us outside the financing costs. So that's why that gets confusing, where the seventeen ninety-five is kind of standalone as a rebate check. The energy savings, I think that's pretty well spelt out. Now we burn approximately twenty-three thousand five hundred kilowatt hours per year. LEDs will burn five thousand and eighty-eight. They break down the cost savings of two thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars, which of course is an estimate on how many hours the lights burn, but I, I believe they're pretty close. Maintenance savings, there should be no maintenance on the lights. Then they, they explain that. Because that's one percent failure rate. They're warranted for ten years. So you add up the two, the payback on it is seven point nine years. That's with the loan and the interest. The, the loan lease term, they call it, would be for five years and an annual payment of fifty-seven hundred dollars. We would absorb twenty, twenty-five, thirty-one. It'd be twenty-five, seven sixty and the six eighty, so we're thirty-two, sixty almost in savings per year. So will it truly cost us a few extra dollars for those eight years if we want to pay it off in five to save interest? We, we can change it. If the council wants to change that term to match the payback years you pay for off the savings. If we do that, you're paying four percent interest for that extended period of time. So if we're comfortable and finances comfortable paying it off sooner, we save that little bit of interest. And after the eight-year payback period, first, those savings continue to go. He told me today, the life expectancy of, they're warranted for ten years. Their life expectancy is fifteen plus. So I, you, you, you get on your research LED lights a lot. A lot of people say they'll last twenty years, but they're not going to save that, so. I, I don't see any downside to it. I mean, it just looks like save, save, save. So. Tangle Lighting, we'll do Tangle Lighting and C S Shavers, the company in Grand Rapids. They work through Tangle Lighting, which I believe is a California company for the actual lights. They will take, and correct me if I'm wrong, I guess, Sam, they'll take care of everything. They'll set up the financing. They will take care of filing the paperwork with consumers for the rebate. The timing, that has to be right. They will make sure the timing works and from the time we put in the offer, within so many months, you have to have the lights installed. They'll make sure all that works. The only other cost on this, I'll say, is going to be the DPW installing them, but we're looking at two days maybe for a person, a couple of lights an hour.
We're hoping we can do two lights an hour.
So I don't, you know, I mean, yes, it's going to be a little more than that. Yes, but it's going to be a small amount for the savings we, we take.
The, the lights in the camping park are, they're, they're.
Different.
Yeah, they're, because, because they're Cobra heads, so, but these are, yeah.
For doing the ones uptown, when you figured that in, that is that like one guy with a, say, running a crane or a.
A lift from Ellsworth, from Gary and Walter.
Okay.
Because we won't use the loader bucket because we're in the air too much of that.
Yeah.
Safety comes in that way.
Thank you, Sam. Is there any other questions on? I guess a win-win. Thirty-two hundred fifty-nine bucks for your savings. So I guess I'd ask for a roll call vote. Proceeding with, we're going to be spending money. Yeah, okay, that's under action. I will, we'll, we'll actually take the roll under action.
Could I ask, how many lights?
Yes.
Could I ask, how many lights, how many lights are gonna be changing and what area?
There are thirty-four downtown streetscape lights, ones around the pole.
Yep.
And then there's six overhead or Cobra head type lights down in the park, in the campground park.
Okay, thank you.
So they're the lights that we, we currently own. They're all the metered lights in the village of the home. Correct, Sam? So they've been, they've been very helpful on that shaver ass. I know Sam talked about sidewalks, but just real quick, since we're busy here. We, they've taken up about one thousand eight hundred and thirty feet, the sidewalk is about two hundred and seventy feet left. They did a bit of cost of about fifty cents a square foot to take them up, saw them and reseed them, and I know. There've been a lot of, a lot of talk, or there's been talk around town about why did we do it? We did it to get out of the liability issue on the sidewalks because the state truly does stipulate that they become a habit. And that habit, prayer it out, we've both had it, and basically any over two inches deficiency discrepancy or anything else that causes an unsafe condition. There's a liability, the insurance company wants you out of it because they become liable, and if we know about it, we need to be responsible, correct it. So at this time, not to spend a lot of money, that's what we did. I know some people are upset, they want sidewalks back, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've ever said, we will never put sidewalks back. What we said is, for now, as a cost measure, we removed our liability. The cost to tear a sidewalk up and replace it's about three dollars a square foot. So I, I think there'll be discussions over the next year. The village can charge the property owners part of the money, we're allowed to put sidewalks in and charge them all the money, plus make them maintain them. I'm not saying we wanna do that, I'm just saying there's so many options, I think, well, we're, period, we need to come up with a sidewalk plan. What sidewalks do we want, how do we wanna maintain them? So, so if anybody asks, we're not tearing all the sidewalks in town up. We tore up the ones that were definitely a liability for the town at what was an affordable cost at this time, so. Some people actually, Sam, who came out and thanked Sam for doing it, giving him a yard back and putting grass back in it, so it goes both ways. So, I don't think we've heard a whole lot of.
More fifty-fifty.
Yeah, and nobody's been truly upset once we explained it to them. I know we probably could've addressed it earlier, but once again, at some point, you have to do it and then work through it and, and we did. So I think they've done a good job. And the sidewalk we should discuss, I guess, right now, tonight, is in front of physical therapy, hundred and thirty feet of sidewalk. Right? That is part of the sidewalk system going downtown and in, in that area where we want to keep sidewalks. Very bad shape. My thought update, right now, I don't, I don't know if it's a sidewalk or asphalt over a sidewalk or what, whatever. It's, it's a, it's truly a mess if you walk out through there, maybe there's something. I personally think we should go down, cut it out from the place, the sidewalk, and have a talk to the physical therapy about what do they wanna do to address their parking lot? Because from their parking lot in is quite a mess, but. Their, their parking lot truly isn't our responsibility, but we don't wanna do anything until Sam does talk to, will, will, will repair the sidewalk, replace it, and repair from the sidewalk to the road. But I think before we do that, and if anybody disagrees, I think we should let physical therapy know we're doing it and schedule it around them. And give them a chance to address their parking lot too. And if there's any other ideas on how we should address that sidewalk there?
I, I've done the same thing, I've looked at it, and it is asphalt, from what I can see, asphalt over crushed, kind of sidewalk in places. I know some people mentioned, or someone has mentioned letting asphalt right out to the road and not put a sidewalk in it. I guess that would be an option that, I don't know if I necessarily like, I think I like the sidewalk and there is a barrier, but just my opinion on it.
If state gets involved in it too.
If it has, and, and I'll agree with you on my personal opinions, I like the looks of, of a sidewalk right into town that people walk on it. The sidewalk, asphalt certainly won't hold up as long as the sidewalk, so.
Cause if they, if they asphalt that, isn't there a possibility Sam would know that the state would make them curb it too?
That becomes an obligation, yeah.
So that's.
I think, I mean, I'm not gonna say we're doing it now, cuz we're gonna look at the budget and see if the money's there, I hope it is, cuz it is the sidewalk we need to take care of. But I just, with the council's approval, I will have Sam go and talk to physical therapy. And receive.
I like the sidewalk idea, but.
So a lot of people are, before we're done with asphalt. Okay, and like, I, like I said, we can take them up, put them for three dollars a foot, that one will be a little more, I know, because of the company. More than four inches of the parking drive over.
Basically the whole thing.
So, yep, so Sam will look at the budget and. Okay. Anybody else on the sidewalk, did I miss, no, Sam, I think we're good on that.
We got one, one more thing, we got one, one piece of sidewalk that we're, that we're, we're going to pull out. But I'm not sure if we're gonna replace it back with black dirt or, right now, just in front of the sidewalk, I got a water problem. Where it freezes in ponds in the winter. So I got Mike Yollinger from Reith Riley giving me a price to do, I'll say a ten-foot slot, seventy feet long to regrade it, to get the water to drain. And at the same time, we'll pull back the curb out or the sidewalk, and then might lay black top down depending on what the prices. And I was hoping to have that for this meeting, but I went, didn't get it in time, didn't get ahold of Mike, so I'll have it for next month's meeting.
Where's that at, Sam?
Uh, down on the corner by Steve Relling's house.
Chester?
Chester.
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah. I, I know my own solid story, yeah. And right now, there's an actual four-inch deflection in the sidewalk in the road, that's how bad it is. And if I can create a waterway to get the water to go off the road, go into the storm drain, run out into the storm drains. And by pulling the sidewalk out and repaving it, I think it's a, a win-win for us.
So, there's truly just that little section of about sixty, seventy feet sidewalk that's in bad shape.
Yep, and the road's already had to go about another thirty feet back behind the sidewalk and regrade it and get water in the road. So Mike Yollinger is gonna give me a price on that.
Oh, and on the same token, the, the township requested we look into it and other people have, so we did, Sam's also, he might give us a price. Uh, what we can do to widen old state, basically from the corner store out to village limits way to create walkways for people. The sidewalk is pretty much a huge expense out there, so we'll talk, Mike's gonna come and, he already looked at, he'll give us a price. Give him a three foot, one side, three foot, two sides, up past where, and I can't tell you all, so we're, Jerry, well, so no, I'm used to live, of course, that's pavement all the way. But that is so wide there, that might just be an issue of painting a line on it and creating a walk place that's not considered part of the roadway. But we're trying to get for better foot traffic too there, so Sam addressed both of them, and next month, I'm sure we'll have.
I, I asked him to have it to me by next month, so. And I will fill the township board in on what we find out.
I have a couple of letters that I will read. One is from Melissa Zelenek. Greetings Central Lake Village Council. Please accept this letter as backup to my statement at last night's Village Council meeting that I'm interested in the planning commission's seat. It would be a privilege to serve with the commission and I look forward to seeing commission members at the next meeting at seven PM on July tenth, two thousand thirteen. I'm not sure who the commission chair is at this time, but I would like to schedule an appointment with them to go over topics the commission is currently working on. And to review minutes and any documentation the planning commission utilizes to make recommendations to council regarding village activity. Thank you for your consideration, Melissa Zelenek. And the planning commission meeting was canceled, so. We'll discuss it next month, because we haven't, the planning commission hasn't even met, so they'll meet again in August. The other one is from Brad Glasgow. Six of the seven people on the current village council do not have any competition for their seats, did not have any competition for their seats. The last two village presidents have run unopposed. While it would be great if people in the village would step up and consider running for office, we have to look at reality, consider that this is unlikely to happen. The village government needs to change to keep up with the times. As a resident in the village of Central Lake, I would like to ask the council to seek to ensure a competitive campaigning environment, which would create a healthier, more representative and more accountable village government. It is time to reduce the size of the council to four council members plus the village president. Such a system is used successfully by the township. It would save the village money and would create more competition for seats on the council. From this competition, the stronger candidates will win. Action on this suggestion should be taken soon in order to get the public input and make it happen before the next election. Thank you, Brad Glasgow. Anybody any? I, I can say, I would, I would not be in favor of reducing the size of the council, because I think right now, we're all, we're. We're seven of us on here. So reducing to five creates a lot more work, but if everybody has a different.
I don't understand how it would create more competition by reducing the size of the board.
That's just, you know, my opinion, I'm sure everybody has an opinion, so. Somebody feels we should pursue reducing it, just.
May I, may I address that? It would create more competition because there'd be more people, fewer seats. Or there would be the same people. There'd be the same amount of people running possibly, and there'd be fewer seats, so. Obviously, took two people off the council, then you have two people that could run.
The, the situation's unique to us.
No, it's not, absolutely not.
It's the same everywhere, a lot, a lot more people complain than they run.
Oh, I, I, absolutely, I agree, but in the last election, I, I looked at the voting card and three, four council members ran with no opposition other than a right-end candidate.
And some nearby, uh, townships and villages didn't have enough to fill their seats.
Yeah, absolutely, but that's why, like, the township has four, four council members.
I don't know if that would, I guess I don't understand the follow-up.
I would think get more seats available, get more people involved if you want it to go smaller.
I don't know, I, I guess, I'd like to see a lot more people run, I really would.
I would too, I would absolutely, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Very concerned and, and, and would be great on the board.
Absolutely, but.
Be a great asset to the village, but I don't, I don't see them running.
Right now, in this, in this meeting, we have one person from the public. That's not press or with the government. So I don't think people are very interested in local politics, which is too bad, absolutely, I agree with you. Um, so I think if we have fewer seats, then you get, you get more people possible for those seats.
Right, you get, you get a lot of bad press too, when you, when you go and ask somebody to, to run for an office. Uh, as I did when I was pro temp here, we have a little mix up there. And, uh, one fellow I talked to would have been very, very big, very confident person on the board. And he says, you know, the neighboring township that, that people were suing them civilly, constantly, day after day after day. Uh, the neighbors to the north, their council went quick because the people just kept calling them at night complaining about some decision they made, you know?
Oh, yeah, it's.
You know, so how?
It's not, uh, it's not a great job, and that contributes to it. And I thank all of you guys for, for running, I, I think that's great. I, I just think that, uh, the township, the Central Lake Township runs six, very successfully with, with four people plus the president. And I think the village could as well, I mean, you guys doing a pretty good job up there right now. There's just four of you plus one.
The township has the same problem, they're, they've lost people just recently, and a back and forth, and they have a hard time keeping their seats filled.
Yeah, absolutely, but it helps to have less seats.
Yeah, and it gets harder and harder, it's like getting firemen for your fire department. As the requirements go up, uh, so do the, so do the liabilities.
Yep.
And so you used to have a fireman come in and sixty hours, you had a, a full-fledged firefighter. Sixty hours of training, now you're talking two thousand hours.
Yep.
And the liabilities are astronomical compared to what they were.
And to compare the village to the township, I, 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 I couldn't even begin to compare.
You're actually trying to hear on that.
Let me finish, the township has a clerk, basically full-time, they have a treasurer, they have a paid supervisor, they have a paid DPW supervisor. And honestly, the village has a lot more going on than the township, so. To compare the two, to me, I mean, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, I mean, we all have different opinions, I understand, I think there's so much at the seven that we need to get done that, that we beat ourselves up trying to get done. And I understand your reasoning, Brad, don't get me wrong, but I think right now, personally, personally, it works better at seven. You know, if everybody in the village, like I said, we're here to represent the village, if the entire village said we'd rather have five on the council, I promise you, my vote would be to go to five. Cause I'm, I'm honestly here to do what, what I get the feeling the majority of the people in the village of Central Lake want done. And yeah, Sam.
No, you best for the second.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, you know, and I, I didn't, I'm just, to, to compare to two different municipalities, I've tried, you know, you look at how do they do their fight, it's, it's almost crazy to try to do, because there's so many different situations. Everywhere, but I think we all agree, more people should be coming here, so we're gonna come to the meetings, but.
Well, when you look into it, the, the amount of time, personal time that's given, like, how much time you spend on that budget? How much uncompensated time?
I, I can't even tell you, I mean.
Almost all of it.
I mean, there's times at two o'clock in the morning, I'm working on that to get it to patent time.
I understand, but also when you go to meetings, and I've been to pretty much every meeting for the last about six months now. You'll get two to three council members in their reports every time saying, not much happened this month, not much to report. So I understand, you know, some of you have a lot of work, I think, I think some of you do a lot more work than, you know, some others. I just think that, uh, that we're not gonna get, we're gonna get people not running and I'd like to see more competition.
I would too. I'd love to see more people involved.
I, I, I think, it's a must get personally, if you reduced it to five, you, you've got trouble finding five people that wanted to run. You have it seven, you have to go, you literally won't look for people that wanna run, and that's the way it's been. Hopefully it changes, but, so.
Look at, yeah, look at their families, we're still looking for people, get Melissa volunteered, and that's a great thing, so. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, thank you.
We're all concerned.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say that one comment, where you said either they're not interested in local politics, or maybe they're pleased with how things are going and they just stay home and enjoy the evening, I don't know.
That's, that's possible.
You could, you could go with your wife.
They're probably sitting on the lake drinking.
As if we have a location of the spot, maybe.
We should change the location of the place.
That's exactly what you should do.
We could do that too. Okay, um, going back, does anybody have a copy of the park committee recommendations? I think we should probably look them over for, um, just, I don't think we can do it right now, we probably only got to look them over and think about it. This is for my, my, right now, these didn't, oh, I'm sorry.
Bill didn't give one here.
And then I think they need, okay, next month, we need to start having to, I've just received. They need premature, they've had a lot of time discussing that, throughout time to look over, think about.
Oh, yeah, I, I looked at this.
Yeah, I looked at it. I think, I think just one real quick thing on it, though, almost all of this here, we really couldn't enact until next year anyways due to the fact that we're in mid-season, so.
Oh, I, I understand that, red, red flag, I would like to see that go with that. The other, the other stuff, I understand.
So we, we can probably find a way to, without changing it, make, yeah, what you're saying is the red flag, it was a stop sign, right, immediately on the scene.
Yeah, it's so.
We can see if they can, so I, so let me get clear on this then, it's not the fact that we have a four-day reservation, it's if we have a sign that pops up that says nothing available.
Right, and that four-day reservation is not doing us any good. It definitely isn't. Uh, if you go in there on Wednesday and make a four-day reservation, you got the rest of the week to go on anyway, you know? What's the difference if they come in Saturday and Sunday and take two days and you still got the other five days to reserve during the week, you know? So I don't see any benefit to them. I do see a benefit of making a, maybe a three-day requirement for holidays on the whole campground. We had several that reserved through one night over the board.
If that, if with, in just that sale, so I'm clear then, there's basically three holidays over the summer, can't be mistaken, correct? Memorial, later than twenty.
Yeah, we only got three of them.
So you're really only talking three days of making that.
But you take, you take one, one or two nights on a holiday, it screws up the whole works, especially when it's on a little weekly, fourth of July.
So.
Something to look at, so.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, good. And the bar's committee for meeting. Yeah, thank you. Would everybody like to cast their vote for these? Thank you, the other ones before we do action, I need. Boys, you all got the little sheet we passed out here on our clerk's hours and payday and increasing it? Is there, is there any discussion on it? And we've all, we've all talked about it a little bit. I mean, it's, after talking to Rachel and Pat and everybody on the council, it's, it's pretty much a given that, that we need more hours in that office to get done what we need done.
I think with the state's increasing demands and the workload we have, Rachel may not really know where she's gonna take a little more time getting some things, eventually she'll speed up and that'll help us out in other areas also. Um, some of the things that we've taken on, um, with social media, websites, stuff like that, I think that would be a great asset that, that can maybe start to get, um.
With the added hours comes more things that we will accomplish. Absolutely. And it's just gonna keep, I'm sure, back and die for the time she's been there every year, there's more and more, and more the state puts on our office and we've been. I mean, I know we saw Pat at twenty hours a week, and I know Pat had probably never had a twenty-hour week, it's always, so it's time to address it realistically, yes, thank you very much. Time to address it realistically, the money is, as it shows in the breakdown, the money's in the budget, it, it's there. Time we address it realistically, the money is, as it shows in the breakdown, the money's in the budget, it, it's there, it's budgeted for. So, when we approve Rachel, if we approve Rachel, appoint her as clerk, which pretty much we will. But any, we'll move on. What we do is for the first month, it will be at the, at what we promised that here, it would be eighteen-five to twenty-five dollars a week. And that gives us time to look this over, any questions we can talk about, and then we'll come back next month with this. Rachel's agreed to that because I don't want anybody rushing into this, I have time to look at it, talk about it, think about it, so. If you have any questions later, call me, email me, any, any you want. I mean, if it doesn't make sense in anything, please. And then next month we'll address it, if that's okay with everybody.
This is the proposal that you want to table until next month?
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, we'll have time to look this over. I mean, we're gonna propose it, I just wanted to pass it out, everybody to look at it and give us a look then, roll it over. If there's any questions out of now, please ask if it doesn't make sense the way it flows.
Just to, one real quick one here, um, under the current that we proposed, it was fourteen-twenty-three hours. Under this next, we're dropping down to fourteen-fourteen an hour.
Because of the more hours. Because of the salary month. Unless, unless we wanna put it as a really, I talked to Rachel about it. Unless we wanna put it as a really silly salary month, you know what I mean?
Okay.
If you did the fourteen, the, the fourteen-twenty-three, forty-four hours a week, it, it puts that in a very, okay. Which is okay, that's what we want, that's what you want, what I thought. No, I, just so I, just for that, one of the tight simplification. No. No, I, I purposefully. Anytime she wants to take less money, I'm more than happy to accommodate that. And that, that includes putting your, as you see, the merge and putting in the retirement program. Any questions you need, or does it, does it?
I just have to look it over.
Okay, okay. All right, you can move on. I think I'm done with my short old presidential report. I'll accept a motion to approve the bill, prepaid the amount of one thousand, three hundred, ten dollars and fifty cents. Payroll in the amount of six thousand, three hundred, seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Payables in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents. For a total approved amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. I motion approve. Motion passed there, support by Bonn, any discussion? Roll call.
Hatterby?
Yes.
Bobbin?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Cruzie?
Yes.
Any new business? Action items. Point Rachel Moser, Rachel Moser as clerk. I accept the motion to.
I'm not gonna make the marshal move on.
Motion by your clerk. Chapman?
Sure.
Second, support by there, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Have you changed your mind? Have you, Rachel? Okay, thank you.
Quick question, sorry.
No, no, no.
Um, that's, that's twenty-five hours a week?
That, that's at salary of twenty-five, salary of eighteen-five, at twenty-five hours a week.
What will be the new office hours, or will there be, are you gonna change?
New office hours will change, will, it's already posted, right? The office hours will be nine to three, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, correct?
Thank you.
So, I know there, there's more hours in office hours, that, so there's some uninterrupted time?
Yeah.
So, that's why that is. What's that?
It doesn't happen.
Doesn't happen.
The other door. No, but anyway, that, that's, that's the intent of that, so they can have some time to truly concentrate on things and get it done. At the same token, then we have to add Rachel Moser as a signer of the village bank account. I accept the motion to. Motion by Bonn, support by Chapman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'll accept the motion to remove Pat Marshall as a signer of the village bank account.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, support by Hatterby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, man.
Bye, Pat.
No longer gonna be pointing at your signature and check that.
Yep. You're gonna need three lost. No. Approve bank, bank drop, pick up, pack those please. Yeah, please.
This particular item for the council member is, um, a lot of times with utility payments, and now when we're in the tax season, we go to the bank and we must have, we can have anywhere from fifty to a hundred checks. And as you now know, they have those, that, um, check reader that they put all the checks through. And then a lot of times if the check doesn't, it does not look right, they have to go through and look at the check and see if the amount matches. Because sometimes it doesn't like what this person has wrote. This gives Rachel the opportunity to leave the bag at the bank, so the bank, if they're busy, the bank, they can take their time and do it and then make sure that everything gets read correctly. So they have to have this for their auditors also, for the bank auditors also.
I'd accept the motion to approve Rachel to. Just to get a bag at the bank.
One real quick question, I guess, just so I'm, I'm, obviously you know how much is in it, you've got documentation, what you're putting in. They just basically say the same thing if it's all accurate?
And if, and if it's not accurate, they will call.
Okay. I'll think this one, yep. I'll make that motion. Motion by Bonn, support, support by Hatterby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If they don't match, Joe, they'll call.
Yes, yes. I understood, okay. I'll accept the motion to cast our vote for the seven incumbent trustees. Motion by there, support by Bonn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, aye. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve the funding for the streetlights.
So moved.
Motion by Hatterby, support, support by Chapman, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hatterby?
Yes.
Bobbin?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Cruzie?
Yep. Any old business?
I have one more question, sorry about that.
Okay, look, we're gonna open up public comment right now, Brad, so public comment.
Um, not, comment question, I'm wondering if Rachel should be made FOIA coordinator?
I, I think.
Or does that happen next month, or?
She, she will be. We appoint our clerk as FOIA, I know, I understand, we have to appoint a FOIA coordinator, we always, we appointed the clerk as FOIA coordinator, but. Always do it.
I think it was just a general thing, Brad, where it was for clerk.
Well, my question is just, I believe a FOIA coordinator has to be appointed, so I didn't know.
I thought, okay, I thought, sure.
Does anybody have a problem with us? No, no, I'm not saying on the council. No, you're right, Brad, thank you.
Yeah, don't, we just figured.
Nobody has an objection. I would accept the motion to appoint Rachel Moser as FOIA coordinator. Motion by Chapman, support, Hatterby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Brad.
Sorry, Rachel.
You see who's gonna do it?
No, it's the right thing to do.
Any additional public comment?
Can I just sit here and ask questions versus standing there and a couple?
No.
The procedures for the planning, appointing a person to a planning commission meeting, like, they appear to the, at a meeting, the, who is the chairperson now?
Chairperson is Nate Sommers.
And the other planning commission people are you and Vicki?
Vicki.
So those three decide, yes, no?
Those three make, the council decides.
Right.
I don't think the council wants to act on, you know, until we get a, a recommendation from the planning commission, hopefully. So I think that would be the step to plan, I, I mean, that's the way I would see it. If anybody disagrees, say otherwise.
No, I just did know what it wants, I wanted to be clear.
The council appoints the planning commission members, but I think proper roll call, we would wanna do it would be. Off the recommendation. Off the recommendation of the planning commission, yes.
This, just veering back to the house real quickly, is what law, you've said several times that you couldn't sell the property with a house on it. What law can we look up to find where it says you can only sell a blank piece of property with no house?
Two-one-one point seven eight M.
Thank you.
The only way we can, by the only way we can fight out a first right refusal on tax-revered property is for public use. Public use is removal of one.
Okay. Uh, so you got, you owned it today or yesterday, or you?
When did we get the, I, I couldn't tell you the exact date that was on the deed we received it.
Do we know exactly how much we paid for it? I mean, did we write the checkout?
Oh, yeah, what was the amount that we approved at the meeting, three thousand, seven hundred? I don't know the exact amount sitting here in front of you, but it's what we approved at the last meeting.
Um, just two more.
Okay.
When you inspected the house before, when you said that it was, you know, filled with garbage inside? Did you get approval for someone to do that? I mean, did council say, go look in that house and tell us it's crappy, or what, how'd that go down?
When we went and looked through, when I went and looked through the house, I went and looked through the house, see what shape it was in.
But did council say to you, go check it out and tell us if it's good or bad? So it was only you? Okay, and who did you get permission from?
Nobody.
Okay. Uh, the bidding procedures, that's in the code? You know, like, for, for the taking the trees down, clearing the land and so forth? Where do we find that exactly?
I'd have to look, like, out exactly where it's at.
I'll follow you there. And then I guess the last question is in regards to something that Patty said. If the, a neighbor or the school complains about burning the house down, what demolition plan would you revert to? I mean, would you just like hammer and chisel it down, or?
I think that's.
I mean, if you can't burn it, what's your option?
I don't think, we discussed. The fire department has stated they feel they can burn it, so.
The fire department's policy is if, if a neighbor close enough to be affected by the smoke objects to it, we won't do it. It's just that simple.
So, what if that happened? What if Denise says, I've got asthma and I don't wanna happen?
Exactly. We don't even, we don't even ask you what the reason is. If Denise says, I don't want you to burn that house next door to me, we won't do it.
So will that, I guess I'm thinking about the cost, will that make, if you can't burn it down and you have to hire labor?
That'll change the cost.
Will that make the church freak out? Will their bid go from twelve thousand to fifteen, or?
It will.
It will go up, yep.
And then.
And is the church willing to pay whatever price?
We'll have to go back with them then and say, you know, do you wanna go that high on it?
According to their letter, it, they're of commitment, and this is just them saying, obviously it's not us, um, committing to them, is that they would purchase it for, for the thirteen thousand, I believe it was, twelve thousand, or any unforeseen cost. Is what they said. So if it costs us four thousand more to do it, they're saying they're willing to do it. At least that's the way I read the letter, you know?
I will be honest, being right next door, I am concerned about that, I, I think about it every day. I look at that house, I look how close I am to it. I, I have concerns about.
Does she have to make a written complaint that says, I'm not cool with this, or? Does she just say to you, Bill, I'm not happy with this?
No, if she tells me that, I won't learn.
I guess what I would, then what's, what's our option?
We adopted that policy years ago and it's served as well.
Good, 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 good.
We just, if, if.
So she can hardly say, or she or the school or anybody can just say, hey, Bill, I'm not cool with this?
They're close enough to be affected by the smoke and they don't wanna burn, I'm not gonna burn it.
Just simply an oral, Bill, I'm not gonna burn.
Some people have a, a fear of it, and some people have a, an allergy to the smoke, and, you know, for me to try to determine whether it's valid or not, that wouldn't be right, so. If they, if they display or express to me a disappointment or diswilling to, to have it burnt next to me, we're not gonna do it. We're not in the business.
I just heard her say she was concerned about.
We'll talk.
Okay, and last one was watching the meeting procedure, sometimes you give a roll call on a vote and sometimes you don't, and I wonder what the criteria are.
It's money.
We're spending money, we do a roll call.
So like you read the letter, it's a hundred and nineteen bucks for dues, now next month you'll come back and you'll say, yes, we're gonna spend that hundred and nineteen bucks to join this group for.
We have that budget tonight, if it comes out of a budget, no, because we've already passed a budget. So, that, that's basically what it is, if we wanna do something outside the budget.
That's it. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I believe that there's certain amounts of, of money that you, as a president, you could spend to a certain, or only if, if it is budgeted amount.
Most we pass the budget, if that approval is spent on budget.
Dues and registrations are a category, so.
Yeah, we, we, we pass the budget.
We stay within the budget.
We stay within the budget. Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, but the street lighting down there wasn't in the budget, so it hasn't been approved to spend.
Right.
And that was.
From all of, um, from mailers. So, I actually.
Any other public comment?
Let's go.
I accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, adjourn.